Twenty twenty-two, I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Can you turn the work work?
Here.
Can you turn the light?
Here.
And this is your board?
Here.
And I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda. Do I get a second?
I'll second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're here today to discuss and hear public comment and consider approval of ordinance number twenty-two dash zero five, amending ordinance number sixteen dash zero six on the use of ATVs and UTVs in Otero County. So I guess we'll open this up. Did you want to have some comments first before I read this?
Yes. One of the reasons Matt Nix called and asked me if we could get this together to try to implement in some new roads, some new state highways coming in for legal for the UTVs and ATVs. So we got with Sheriff Black and Sheriff Black recommended that we do an open comment deal to get any comments or see what the public has to say about it. So that was one of the, that's one of the reasons why we're here. And then also our attorney, Mr. Nichols, rewrote some of the ordinance to bring it up to the new state rules and stuff that was amended. We'll get Mr. Nichols to give us, tell us what he changed in that and stuff here in just a minute on some of the corrections and stuff. So we can either do that first or we can read the ordinance.
I can give an explanation of why we're updating the ordinance. The reason for the update is the, the one we have on the books was missing a few things. The State Transportation Board, when you, when a county requests to add highways or get approval for highways to be OHV accessible, they have requirements that we have an ordinance in place and they want certain elements from the State Highway OHV Act on there, and we were missing a few. And just in case, they, they wanted to be picky and say, well, you don't have this in your ordinance, went and copied any counties, which is thorough. And everything that's in it is already state law. There's nothing more restrictive that we're putting in there. It's already requirements that you have to follow. It's just restating them in ordinance for the county and so that we can get these new highways approved and accessible through the State Transportation Commission.
And these new roads that we're talking about implementing in are trying to request that they get approved by the state is the road two forty-four to the Muscullaro Line, all the highway one thirty from Cloudcroft to Mayhill, the sixty-five sixty-three road, and the highway twenty-four from, to Pinyon from one thirty to Pinyon. So that's, that's the roads that, right now that we are asking or that Matt asked us to try to implement in. So does anybody have any questions on any of that or anything to add on that? Sweet.
Okay. We'll go ahead and do these, these comments first and then we'll read the ordinance. Jack Graham, you want to come speak?
Me?
Yeah.
You're gonna have to read this too, because I don't understand it.
On the ordinance?
Yeah.
You want, why don't we read the ordinance and then we'll do the, we'll talk about afterwards?
Okay.
Then we'll answer any questions.
Right.
What's on here is not what ninety percent of us write.
That, that ordinance right there is what the attorney said he updated to the state laws. That, so we'll, we'll address that. Let's read the ordinance first and then we'll do the questions.
All right. Here we go. Otero County, New Mexico, ordinance number twenty-two dash zero five, and ordinance amending ordinance sixteen dash zero six and authorizing the operation of off-highway vehicles on paved streets or highways owned and controlled by Otero County. Whereas the New Mexico Legislature amended section sixty-six dash three dash ten eleven, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, allowing a county by ordinance or resolution to authorize the operation of an off-highway motor vehicle on paved streets or highways owned and controlled by the county and whereas currently no state law or county ordinance prohibits the use of off-highway motor vehicles on unpaved roads, streets or highways owned and controlled by the county and whereas the Board of County Commissioners desires to adopt an ordinance that would authorize the operation of off-highway motor vehicles and defined herein on paved streets or highways owned and controlled by Otero County and whereas the Board duly published notice of its intention to consider the present ordinance at least fourteen days prior to the present meeting in accordance with NMSA nineteen seventy-eight four dash thirty-seven dash seven and whereas the Board held an open public hearing on the consideration of the present ordinance at which there was an opportunity for public comment. Now therefore be it ordained that the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County does hereby adopt an ordinance authorizing the operation of off-highway motor vehicles on streets or highways owned and controlled by Otero County as follows. Authorization: A. The Board of Commissioners of Otero County, New Mexico hereby authorize the operation of recreational off-highway vehicles as defined herein on any paved street or highway owned and controlled by Otero County under the conditions set forth in the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act, Section sixty-six dash three dash ten eleven through sixty-six dash three dash ten sixteen, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, and any amendments thereto. And this ordinance and B. The operation of recreational off-highway motor vehicles is prohibited at all times on limited access highways and freeways pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, Section sixty-six dash three dash ten eleven A. Definition: A. An off-highway motor vehicle, OHB, is defined as a motor vehicle designed by the manufacturer for operation exclusively off the highway or roads and includes, one, all-terrain vehicle, which means a motor vehicle fifty inches or less in width, having unlaidled, dry weight of one thousand pounds or less, traveling on three or more low-pressure tires, and having a seat designed to be straddled by the operator and a handlebar-type steering control. Two, recreational off-highway vehicle, ROV, which means a motor vehicle designed for travel on four or more non-highway tires for recreational use by one or more persons and having, A. A steering wheel for the steering control, B. Non-straddle seating, C. Maximum speed capacity greater than thirty-five miles per hour, D. Gross vehicle weight rating no greater than one thousand seven hundred fifty pounds, E. Less than eighty inches in overall width exclusive of accessories, F. Engine displacement of one thousand cubic centimeters or less is equipped from, there's the typo, should be from, from the manufacturer instead of from. I knew it was in there. And G. Identification by mean of a seventeen-character vehicle identification number. B. The authorization granted by the ordinance for the operation of an off-highway motor vehicle is limited to OHVs as defined in this ordinance. No other vehicle defined as an off-highway motor vehicle under NMSA sixty-six dash three dash one zero zero one dash, or period one, is authorized for operation on any paved street or highway owned and controlled by Otero County. Equipment: A. OHVs may not be operated on any paved street or highway owned and controlled by Otero County unless, one, the vehicle has one or more headlights and one or more taillights that comply with the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act. Two, the vehicle has brakes, mirrors, including driver's side rearview, mufflers, and a signal horn. Three, the operator and all passengers are properly secured by safety belts, ROVs only. Four, the operator of the vehicle is wearing eye protection and compliance with the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act. Five, all passengers and operators under the age of eighteen are wearing eye protection and securely fastened safety helmets in compliance with NMSA Section sixty-six dash three dash ten, ten point three, and six, the vehicle is equipped with spark arrest, with a spark arrestor approved by the United States Forest Service. And four, license permits, insurance, and registration. A. A person must have obtained the following in order to operate an OHB. Number one, a valid driver's license, neither a learner's permit nor motorcycle license shall satisfy this requirement. Two, an OHB education card issued by the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish if eighteen years of age or younger. Three, insurance or evidence of financial responsibility for OHVs being operated in compliance with the provisions of the Mandatory Financial Responsibility Act, NMSA Section sixty-six dash five dash two oh five. A homeowner's policy will not satisfy this requirement and, four, unless accepted under the NMSA Section sixty-six dash three dash one, registration of OHV being operated. For New Mexico residents, OHVs must be registered at the New Mexico Motor Vehicle Division. Non-residents, OHVs must be registered in the owner's state of residence. For non-residents whose state of residence does not provide the registration of OHVs, non-residents must obtain a non-resident permit through the New Mexico Department of Game and Fish. B. If applicable, proof of items one through four must be in a person's possession while operating an OHB. Five, operation. A person shall not operate an OHB on any paved street or highway owned and controlled by Otero County, one, in excess of the posted speed limit or otherwise prohibited by state law, two, in a careless, reckless, or negligent manner as to endanger the person or property of another, three, while under the influence of intoxicating liquor or drugs as provided by Section sixty-six dash eight dash one oh two, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. Holy cow. Number four, while in pursuit of and with intent to hunt or take a species of animal or bird protected by law unless otherwise authorized by the State Game Commission. Five, in pursuit or, or of harassment of livestock in any manner that negatively affects the livestock's condition. Six, to intentionally approach wildlife. Seven, in a manner that has a direct negative effect on or interferes with persons engaged in agricultural practices. Eight, in excess of ten miles per hour within two hundred feet of a business, animal shelter, horseback rider, bicyclist, pedestrian, livestock, or occupied dwelling unless the person operates the vehicle on a closed course or track or a public roadway. Nine, when conditions such as darkness limit visibility to five hundred feet or less unless the vehicle is equipped with, A. One or more headlights of sufficient candle power to light objects at a distance of one hundred fifty feet, and B. At least one taillight with a sufficient intensity to exhibit a red or amber light at a distance of two hundred feet under normal atmospheric conditions. Ten, that produces noise that exceeds ninety-six decibels when measured using test procedures established by the Society of Automotive Engineers pursuant to standard SAE J dash twelve eighty-seven. Eleven, unless, unless the OHB is equipped with a spark arrestor approved by the United States Forest Service. Twelve, in the left lane of traffic or in a side-by-side manner, OHVs must be, must be operated single file and as far as to the right of the right lane as safely possible. Thirteen, all occupants are sitting in a designated seat in the OHB. Fourteen, where off-highway motor vehicle traffic is prohibited under law, state or federal rules or regulations, or fifteen, within two hundred yards of a residence other than the residence of the owner of the OHB being operated between hours of eight PM and eight AM except for the storage and removal of the OHB. B. Operators must follow this ordinance and all state laws pertaining to the operation of motor vehicles as set forth in the Motor Vehicle Code, Chapter sixty-six, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. Six, age restrictions. A person must be at least sixteen years of age to operate an OHB. A person under the age of eighteen shall not operate an off-highway motor vehicle unless the person is visually supervised at all time by a current legal guardian or a person over the age of twenty-one who has a valid driver's license. Seven, speed limit. OHVs operating on streets or highways owned and controlled by Otero County shall operate at either the posted speed limit or at a speed limit that may be established by the New Mexico State Transportation Commission for such vehicles, whichever is slower. Eight, exemptions. Off-highway vehicles, OHVs being used for agricultural operation are exempt from this ordinance. Nine, enforcement. Prosecution of violations under this section may be commenced by the issuance of a citation charging the violation. Citations may be issued by a deputy from the Otero County Sheriff's Office, a wildlife conservation officer, state police officer, or any other peace officer with jurisdiction in Otero County. Penalties. Another individual, firm, partnership, cooperation, or any entity who violates this ordinance shall be guilty of a penalty assessment misdemeanor and subject to penalties as listed under sixty-six dash three dash ten twenty, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight. Effective date: This ordinance shall become effective immediately pursuant to the statutory authority provided to the Otero County Board of Commissioners, authority to take emergency action to protect against the immediate danger to the public health, safety, and welfare of the county or to ordinances pursuant to NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, Section four dash thirty-seven dash seven C, two thousand and three, C, NMSA nineteen seventy-eight, four dash thirty-seven dash one, two, four dash thirty-seven dash thirteen, nineteen eighty-one. Repealer. All county ordinance or resolutions inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Good grief. Okay. Now, Jack, you want to say something? Where'd you go? You're first on the list.
So, on the
Would you sit down here and speak into that so we can get it on recording?
So, a couple of things here that I think that we're all kind of wondering, is OHB, ROV, the ROVs, the weights is about, you know, a thousand pounds, seven hundred and fifty-five pounds. For our buggies that we ride on the roads with right now, they're anywhere from twenty-five hundred pounds to thirty-two hundred pounds. So
Okay.
We just don't know, I mean, we have DOT tires, which it says, you know, off-road or not rated highway tires. Our tires are. I'm not saying all of them are, but the majority of the buggies that are running around right now, they have DOT tires. When I got stopped by Game and Fish, which it says Game and Fish will give us a ticket, he already told me, he walked up and said, I already know what you're gonna say, Mr. Graham. I have a license plate, highway use, I have insurance, I have brake lights, I have a windshield, I have seat belts, I have DOT tires, my buggy runs at eighty-five miles an hour. It's just like a car. So he, he couldn't write, I mean, he could've wrote me a ticket, I would've went to court, but he chose not to write me a ticket, because I mean, it's just wasting court. So some of these definitions in here, you know, we run on the road, it says OHB. The signs say OHB. I mean, to me, an OHB is not a ROV, and I know that the definitions, they're trying to tell me that the definitions are the same. Well, I think that they're different, because one's fifty inches, mine's not fifty inches.
The fifty inches, the way I'm reading the fifty inches is on the ATV, not the, not the OHB.
Right.
Right.
But all the signs on the highway says no OHVs, not ROVs. So what do you, so when we run down two forty-four, it says no OHVs. Mine's not OHB.
Sheriff Black, would you like to comment on this, just, that your territory up there was?
You know, and then, you know, going to Sunspot, same thing, you know, going, going thirty.
Right.
No OHVs.
But if we're trying to get the state to adopt these, then they will, that, no OHB will go away.
It should, yes.
If we can get them to adopt these highways.
Right.
And one other thing before I forget, Matt just texted me and asked me to tell you why he's not here, is he tested positive to COVID this morning, so that's why he's not here. If you have any questions, if he can answer anything he said, call, you know, so.
So just, I mean, we're just kind of, you know, I mean, we don't like to break the law or nothing like that, I mean, but we try to, you know, go by the law as, as much as we can, you know, so all of our buggies, I mean, a majority of the buggies have turn signals and a horn. You know, so why can't, I mean, we watch, I've watched four-wheelers, I've watched mini bikes, all that stuff run up and down White Sands. That's against the law. I know that's against the law, because they don't even have license plate on them.
That
You know, so we're just, we're just trying to find a way to get into Cloudcroft or get into Sixteen Springs from Lawless Canyon. I mean, we, we try to go to Cloudcroft and eat, so we ride our buggies up there and, you know, revenue to Cloudcroft, but we can't do that legally.
So
You're not wrong in what you're saying. I mean, the definitions are lacking, but this is a copy of what the state has for their definitions, and they want that in our ordinance to approve it. So I see what you're saying and
Okay, so what do we go off of? So the sign says OHVs. Mine's a ROV. So I'm legal?
They would say you're not right now, because we
I know, but this right here says different.
Okay.
Sign goes away.
Yes.
Is what they're saying.
The sign will go away, right, but I'm saying, what happens if the sign doesn't go away? What happens if they don't pass it?
Well, well, that's, that's the deal we'll have, the bridge we'll have to cross, Jack, but what we're trying to do is get everything put together in order, in their state law orders, to ask for these roads to be opened up. Now, when they, if, if they fight us on it or they agree, then that's when those questions are gonna come up. Or if they say no, then that's when we'll have to ask your question.
As far as the definition, it says ROVs are included in OHVs. So, no OHVs, no ROVs.
They're classifying you as the same deal.
Right. So we just need to vote on it and say that we want it and then we can discuss it later?
Well, we're gonna try to approve this, to bring this, to vote on this right here on the ordinance, so we can take the next step and go to the state to try to get those roads that I mentioned right there opened up, that are right now close to.
So was there, at one time, was there a deal where it said you couldn't run any of the OHVs or the ROVs, anything under forty-five miles an hour or any over fifty miles an hour? Because I know I've read something or heard something about that, but it wasn't in this. It was, it was never like that at one time?
So right now, whatever the posted speed limit is, is what you're gonna have to, you, you can't go over.
Correct.
Right.
I'm, I'm saying that you couldn't ride a, a off-road vehicle side-by-side on any road that is over a certain mile an hour.
I think it says in there forty-five miles an hour.
Right.
Yeah.
So if it's thirty-five miles an hour, you still can?
Anything forty-five and below, you're good to go.
But if it's in front of a house, it's only ten miles an hour.
Correct. On the road?
And if it's at eight o'clock at night, eight o'clock in the morning, and the only vehicle I can get out of, up in the mountains, is my four-wheel-drive ATV, and I go, I, I need to go to the grocery store because I got two foot of snow on the ground. It's illegal because it's past eight o'clock. Well, why even have enough headlights in the front? Because you can't drive at dark. There's no reason.
And, and you know as well as I do that that is how it's road. You know how many of these buggies are running around after eight o'clock at night?
Always bucks.
Yeah. So it's, there's probably a lot of laws here, and you can, you can ask a law enforcement officer right there what his interpretation on that. I've run around way past when I was hunting in it. A lot of times you come out ten o'clock at night.
I can't be in a meeting here on, with my ATV. Now, if you pass this thing, when I leave here, I'll be illegal.
No. You're in the city of Alamo Gordo, so whatever the city of Alamo Gordo has
I live in the county. Soon as I get eighty-two, I'm in violation.
The caveat to that's within two hundred years of a residence between the hours of eight and eight. No, 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 it's right here on Route fifteen. Operation under number fifteen.
Well, I gotta run through Lawless to get to my house. That means I'll be illegal.
So it's just a matter of, as soon as they enforce that. There's the spirit of the law, there's the letter of the law. And depends on the law enforcement officer that's holding the ticket book on how they're gonna enforce that. enforcement officer that's holding the ticket book on how they're going to enforce that.
I want to comply with the law, that's why the law should be made and thought about.
I agree with you. A situation like this would be if you've got, if somebody's racing around on the block in the middle of the night, it gives them a reason to stop it. I think if you're just going down the road, it's point A to point B.
But that's school mentality. In other words, everybody else is real quiet, but we got a kid that acts up, so the whole class gets punished.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
But this is New Mexico state law.
This is state statute passed by the legislature.
Is that the proposed state law, or is that what's enacted right now?
It's enacted. It is the law.
It is the law.
This is copying the law.
Are you done, Jack? So, that is the New Mexico state law right now. So, whether we pass this tonight or not.
New Mexico State uses police enforcement.
Takes precedence.
David, don't pull me over because I'm going home.
Bryce, did you want to say something?
Sure.
Sure.
I'm Bryce Eaton. So, I'm not here to argue the state statutes that are already in place. Me and Mr. Nix, we've discussed this in depth about what we're presenting and what we're asking for here. So, for example, there's many roads, forest roads and county roads in the mountains that we are allowed to ride on and legal to ride on. And so, part of the, the thought process there is if you come out on one of the dirt Forest Service roads, and, you know, let's say a couple miles down the paved road is another dirt road, well, the only way to access that is by means of the highways that we're discussing here. So, therefore, you know, allowing this, you know, this topic that's for discussion, allowing this would, it would, it'd make for a lot more pathways and desired locations for OHV riders like ourselves. To get to point A to point B, you know, if you're camping here, you're visiting friends over here, that highway is the only passage through, because a lot of the trails, the smaller Forest Service trails, don't allow the ROV-sized equipment on their trails. So, that's, that's one of the big benefits of this. Working towards the goal of being able to get into Cloudcroft is, you know, obviously a great thing. It'll be close with this, you know, we've talked about going to the Forest Service. If we, you know, if we can get this far, then the next step would be working with the Forest Service on a couple other items to where we can go to Cloudcroft and patronize the community there. So, anyway, that's just my brief comments on, on why we're proposing this and some of the definitions of that. So, thank you.
If I might.
Sheriff?
I think from reading this, and I, I read it pretty thoroughly, it makes it hard for you to come into compliance. That's how I see it. That's what I'm looking at. Makes it difficult for you, and I, and I want to say, you're trying to do what's correct, but under this proposed, well, it's already a law, I guess is what they said, but I think it's going to be difficult for you all to come into compliance and, and try to stay within the law is what I'm looking at. That's what I'm thinking right this minute.
So, RB, when they're saying that their, their buggies are bigger and heavier than what is listed in here, is that, are we bumping up against the state law with that?
That's the state's definition of it, and it is probably outdated because, you know, side-by-sides have changed a lot in the last few years. I, I mean, the enforcing entity is going to be the Sheriff Department. I don't think they're going to be nitpicking over the weight of the vehicle or how many CCs it has.
So, if, if we increase the weight and all that stuff in this ordinance, would we be in violation of the state law?
We could make it stricter, but we can't make it looser.
I was afraid you were going to say that.
Yeah.
Right. You can't supersede the state law.
My Smart Car is lighter than my side-by-side, and it's small.
So, Sheriff, what's your opinion on this? I mean, we're trying to keep everybody on the straight and narrow.
David Lacko, Terro County Sheriff. I too have spoken with Matt Nix on several occasions. We've talked quite, quite a bit about this. When this first came out, I was totally against it because I just knew it was going to have people get killed, but cars running over buggies and stuff like that. Since this, we have investigated zero crashes. The only crashes that we've investigated is those that are turned over on trails or something like that. So, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I think that, we see a lot of people go and rent cabins in Cloudcroft, and they put their buggies on the trailer, and they drive to Sunspot so they can drive to Timbuktu. Okay? We see people come up Car Canyon, they get to the highway. Well, we know Benson Ridge is right down the road, and it's, it's, it's a chat, so they take, buzz down the highway to get to Benson Ridge. Or, you know, someone's trying to go all the way to Timbuktu and stuff. I think the speeds on those highways up there, sixty-five, sixty-three, One Curry, twenty-four, I don't see an issue with it. I, I think it would help the community of Cloudcroft. People can come in, rent cabins, get in their buggies and take off from there. I mean, they could ride all day. They can go to Timbuktu, they can go to Pinyon, and make a loop all the way around, and make a day out of it. I think the only issue that we're going to kind of run into right now is the section of two forty-four. Right now, there is no way to get from the village of Cloudcroft to two forty-four without buzzing on Highway eighty-two. Highway eighty-two is the worst section of highway in the entire county. We have more crashes, more deaths, more everything on Highway eighty-two. We've, I don't know if y'all noticed, we've increased our presence up there, our patrols, just trying to slow people down. So, no, they don't need to be on Highway eighty-two, but I think, like you were saying, step one is let's look at this. Step two, let's work on getting from the village to two forty-four. Go down Lollu's Canyon, Little Bailey, all the way down Bailey Canyon. I mean, those, those are neat rides, and I'm all for it. I just think we need to, well, and just reading these, as far as these descriptions on the vehicles and stuff, maybe that needs to be looked at just a little bit before...
But we would have to take that to another step to the state to try to either update their, their vehicle rules, classifications or requirements. I don't know if that would be us to do that, would it be the sheriff to do that, or would that be a, say, an individual, a buggy group club or whatever to try to present that to the legislature to, to do that? But I understand these were probably wrote years ago, and the buggies they got now are, like, like RB said, they're totally different. So, it's, I don't know how we're going to change this very much and stay into the, the state regulations.
I think the way this is written, you know, I, I'm going to pull it. I mean, this would apply to mine. My son has a buggy, you know, a smaller one, that would apply. He, he would be all right. You get like, you know, like Dusty's buggy. Yeah, we got issues there. Yeah, he's going to have issues if he gets on the road and stuff, so.
Would he get, would the Sheriff Department pull them over? If it was two state, say, one thirty was open, and they went off of these right here, and Jack rode his buggy on one thirty, and a deputy passed him, would they pull him over? Would they even know the difference in the regulations?
Right now, yes.
They do?
Yeah. Them and Game and Fish. We've, we've been to a lot of schoolings, and basically, yes.
So, how do we go about getting these changed?
That is, I do not have the answer right now. That's something I would have to do some research on to see how, how we would go about doing that, whether it be visiting with Senator Burks, Senator Riggs, legislation introduced. I, I'm not positive right now. I would have to find that answer for you.
Yeah. I'm guessing this is probably just outdated because of how the buggies have increased because, I mean, a bigger sized vehicle is going to be safer than a smaller one. I mean, that's just common sense, so maybe it wouldn't be as hard as we think to get this changed, maybe through the legislature.
I, did we ever get anything from Red River that we were just trying to get some more information from? That ordinance up there that was, I don't know, we, we have to pull, try to pull some more information from other, other villages or counties that have done this.
Well, we have Eddie, was it Eddie County?
Yeah. This is basically a copy of Eddie County's, but what the State Transportation Board and their list of things that you have to submit to them, it's an ordinance, you have to have an ordinance, and it specifically says the qualifiers set in subsection E four of sixty-six dash three dash one thousand one point one, and that is these exact definitions where, you know, seventeen hundred pounds or whatever, that's the state, state definition, and they want the ordinance to have that in it.
So, okay, this is just my own opinion, and if y'all have any, I think we need to get on board with the state regs right now, and then we need to address to where we can fall, carry on the next step to the state to try to get them to approve these four roads, and then we're going to have to figure out how we can address the regulations, or who are we going to have to address the regulations to or approach to try to get that changed.
If I could, if Dusty comments here, takes a little something?
So, the definition of OHV, it's going to be my belief that that's dictated federally, that if a manufacturer of a certain vehicle under a certain weight and under certain CCs qualifies as an OHV. So, the vehicle I have is two thousand nineteen to West, it was the biggest one that they made in two thousand nineteen as a race model, by Hunkin' Off, or one of the trophy truck suspension and all that. So, I looked it up on Polaris's website, and it has a driveway to seventeen forty-one, so it meets the definition that they required for that vehicle at that time. Two thousand twenty-two, they want to change, but I think there's a limitation on CCs that they could put in those up to a certain point. Now, Polaris came out with a new version this year that's got a larger engine, I think the displacement's over a thousand CCs, but they were limited to that number for many years based on the guidelines that they had to go up. Super manufacturing, EPA, all of the exhaust screens, the airbags, the crash safety data, all that stuff is dictates what this qualified does. So, the, your definition there is not really able to change that. When I got pulled over in two thousand twenty-one by State Police and owned my business, I did a lot of research because I know Ria Doso had annexed, so Sutter, Sutter is an ROV-designated road. So, I made many, many phone calls to work on getting White Sands transferred into the same situation, just because I want to drive down Ten Street, and I want to go down eight blocks and get to my store without having to run down the residential street and cut across from New York. I just don't think that we want to push vehicle traffic off of a main thoroughfare onto a residential area, but that's what they're wanting us to do. Also, I mean, if I wanted to leave my store and go to Staples to pick up some supplies, I can't get there anyway without driving on White Sands Boulevard. If I need a ticket for service, I can't get to Rocky Mountain without trailer in it, there's no cross street to get directly across into Rocky Mountain Supply. Anybody else that owns a Kawasaki or a Suzuki or a Canon, I think they have out there, they can't get there without trailer in those locations. So, that was my proposal. What Ria Doso did is they did not count the, let's go with definition A one, that's going to be your formula with steering wheels and a sali. They did not approve those for that route, they only approved side-by-sides. And it was a process where the city or the village of Ria Doso submitted paperwork to the State of New Mexico DOT Department of Transportation, and they were granted, there was a study done, and they were approved to make that an ROV route, and had to put signs where that is allowed. I got pulled over again July twenty-third. We were going to Las Vegas, and I just read, run down to the store and take care of some stuff before we went uptown. And he wrote me a ticket, so we're going to see how that plays out in magistrate court, probably on Monday. But I had not heard where my case had gone with the city until after then, I started making more phone calls if I thought that we had this handled. And it turns out that the, the state wrote a letter of denial. I have that, I can read it here for you for what they sent to the City of Alamo Gordo. I can't really, and it kind of, it may help you in how you word your letter and the support that you get with it on, on maybe making it successful and not having a failure like the city.
Excuse me, if I can interrupt real quick, I'm sorry, we have a woman here. There is a silver SUV at twelfth and Michigan blocking a home. Is it another driveway?
There is no driveway, it's on Spot and Park. It's a Toyota SUV, it's a Chevy or something.
Okay, sorry. Sorry.
So, this letter from the New Mexico Department of Transportation is not dated, but it's addressed to Dave Nunley, City of Alamo Gordo Acting Public Works Director, twenty-six-hundred North Florida Avenue, Alamo Gordo, New Mexico, eighty-three one home. Mr. Nunley, reason of US fifty-four seventy request to designate for ROV use. MMDOT District Office has reviewed your State Transportation Commission request to have a section of White Sands Boulevard, also known as State Highway fifty-four seventy, be designated for ROV use. District Two Traffic Section was tasked with the evaluation and providing the recommendations to the district engineer. The route proposed by City of Alamo Gordo does not meet the intent of Commission Policy seventy-one, in parentheses, CP-seventy-one. Recreational off-highway vehicles on paved highways, paved state highways, period. US fifty-four seventy, White Sands Boulevard is a heavily traveled route, has multiple lanes in its direction with significant annual average daily traffic AATs. These conditions are not optimal for mixed vehicle use with ROVs. Relative safe conditions cannot be maintained. CP-seventy-one requires that there are no alternate routes to propose ROV route. Numerous alternate routes were identified. Policy requires strong support by state police and local enforcement. No formal documentation on this topic was submitted, so I suggest that the Sheriff's Office, State Police, Game and Fish, whoever has jurisdiction of that area, get them on board with this, get their input, have them write a letter of approval so that you have this support and they're not taking a guess on that. Back to the lever, and in accordance with District Traffic Section assessment, the proposed US fifty-four seventy ROV route request is denied. I will not be recommending or submitting the proposed routes to the State Transportation Commission for approval. So, it got its legs got off the monitor before it ever made it to the Commission. I believe that they started this basically city limits to city limits, and that was probably pretty broad, but it gets you to the, the dealerships out on Highway seventy towards base that service these units. This was signed respectfully Francisco Sanchez, E period E period MMDOT District Two Engineer, and as I said, not dated.
But Dusty, my understanding was it was from eighty-two to the overpass. Can, can you ride? You can't ride north of eighty-two?
None of it's been approved, apparently.
Okay. So, how did, how did the city get this adopted to ride the, all the buggies that you see in town?
They're just not enforcing it. Again, letter of law versus spirit of law. It's a, between, and I, I'm okay with either you go down, pass overpass, or you stop at the overpass, it doesn't matter to me. It's low speed, it's thirty-five miles an hour, forty-five miles an hour in the entire zone. Once you get out towards base, you get a higher speed. I think if they were going to let them go out to, say, those dealerships, it needs to be right lane only. You can't get in the middle lane, you can't get in the left lane unless you're going to turn. It needs to be right lane only. When those adults break on those things, you basically slip them at neutral. I had mine go out on a scenic, and it just, you just got to pull over and coast to a stop. So, if you were in a position where you're, you can't accelerate and get out of some of this way, it could be a bad thing, so. thing. So, but that's the higher speed area. As far as getting into, I, I, I missed the first part of the meeting, I couldn't get it in time, but I don't know what areas you're looking at. But I was looking to Cloudcroft by taking the back road from Longers Canyon on to two forty-four and then you hit eighty-two and then you're bouncing there. I agree with David, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want the entire eighty-two open, but I think we should adjust a mile or two between Cloudcroft Village and the, the village of Cloudcroft and then to Highway two forty-four, that's likely a problem getting there. It's a short stretch of road. I don't, I never worked the mountains when I was in law enforcement, but I, I don't, I can't imagine that's a high danger area right in there.
Just a second, we'll get you in just a sec.
That's all we're kind of looking at right now.
So, you're, you'd be good on two forty-four, it's just a little tiny stretch of eighty-two right there?
Yeah, from where two forty-four hits eighty-two to the Cloudcroft, into Cloudcroft, yeah, that's, that's our problem right there.
So, are the trails from coming out of Zinker through there, are those open trails or are they closed now? Coming into two forty, or two forty-four?
In Zinker? I have no idea. I've been in that place since long, I, I couldn't.
Well, there used to be the trails, you used to come, could come all the way across.
You could have all the way along the canyon, but I, I don't know about Zinker, I haven't been in there in so long, I couldn't, you know, I'd go over.
That's close.
It's closed?
When I first got this, I, I looked at the map to see where we could go and it looked like you could get on two forty-four and pop into a campground and hit Oshere Trail and drive back in there. And there's a gate wide enough for a car to get through, but they keep it closed. And I can't, I looked, I looked at the signage, it talks about foot traffic and bicycle traffic, horse traffic, and there's, you know, they do the circles with holes through them or whatever, cross out.
And I talked with Eric Bursey from up in Cloudcroft, I was, in fact, sent him an invite to come to this tonight, but he had other commitments yet. But he has, he's been working on trying to get a trail open in Cloudcroft to, to two forty-four, and I think that's the one he was kind of looking at, was to that, that campground, go to their gate and stuff. And he had been looking to try to get another one out the south side of Cloudcroft, but if sixty-five, sixty-three, one thirty's open, that, that wouldn't be a problem. He, you know, crossed the highway there at one thirty and you can go today, you know, so.
Yeah, Matt just texted me, says Zinker's closed from the tower down, so.
I think that's all I have.
Yes, sir. Gentlemen, I don't, do you have a question for one of these two or?
Yeah, the question is, they were talking about White Sands in the Alamo, Orlando city area. My understanding was that we could ride the shoulder. That's wrong.
Yeah, you can not ride the paved surface.
So, the reason why I question this is because practice supply sells a lot of side-by-sides and four-wheel and like that. And to get to the DMV or both of the, the commercial DMVs, I see nothing in here that talks about crossing over a state highway. And I understand that's legal, but there's nothing in, in here that talks about that either. So, if they could, if you guys could add something like that so that people be aware that yes, you can cross over. I've been talking to a lot of people and they were totally unaware of that.
Is this something that you can, can you add something to the state deal or?
If it's legal for them to do that, then we could. I just have to find what the state language is concerning that. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Sheriff, is it legal to cross over a state highway, just as long as you don't drive on it, that you can cross it?
If you, let's just say in Cloudcroft, you're in Cloudcroft riding around, you get to Highway eighty-two, you want to go to Timberone, you can cross Highway eighty-two from one side to the other, straight across.
Okay.
If you cannot turn on it, go up two blocks and then take off. Cross it even on White Sands, if you, um, Ted Street, I mean, if you're riding on Ted Street, you can cross White Sands Boulevard, but you can't turn and go the other way.
Right, right. Right now, is it illegal to ride on White Sands Boulevard?
Oh, yeah.
What are all these buggies doing riding them down White Sands Boulevard?
As I said, there's, there's some people that understood the spirit of law versus the letter of law.
The intent of the law.
By the letter of law, they can write you a ticket, but if you, I mean, I seen a, a Model T with wooden tires coming out of Autozone the other day. Took a video and like, alright, so you're telling me that that's safer than, I have, in addition to everything Jack has, I have a windshield wiper.
Yeah.
I had a question, and really it's for David. By, by law, the, the roads like eighty-two, the road is from fence line to fence line, ain't it?
That's, that's the state easement, yes.
So legally, we can't even ride in the dirt?
Not supposed to.
He just said you can't ride on the shoulder.
So, so I guess why a lot of people are upset is that we try to do what's best, we ride in the dirt, but we get in trouble, but we have to have license plates on, we have to have registration, we have to have insurance, because that's what this tells us to do.
Right, right.
But we can't ride in nowhere. It's just that in our garage, look at it, because we can't ride them.
On Highway seventy, fifty-four, there's.
We pay the state to ride.
I'm not sure if it's on both sides of the highway, but you can ride it exact, off the road, I mean, during where they call the easement. There's paths all the way from Duarosa into Alamo, Orlando.
You're not, that's illegal.
And.
Well.
Matter of fact, I think they were, the state maintained because when they put the bridge in, they graded it really nice for, to, to go down into the creek and back up it in Malu.
David, Matt sent me another text asking about the Game and Fish has the laws. You've been training with them, so what, what laws are different from the Game and Fish? Are they implementing the same exact?
Same, same.
Same thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just, the program was actually implemented and, and kind of, Game and Fish was kind of the enforcement agency that, that DPS put in charge of it. So, that's part of their daily duties is, they do more enforcement on the OHV laws and stuff like that than anybody else. But, yeah, we, we train, we've done the same classes, we've got the same training, they do, um, but I can see.
Does that require training?
Yes, to understand the law, it does.
No, no, some of it's like voluntary, some of it's like part of your biennial.
Oh, it's not, no, it's not biennial. But, no, you, you've got to, you've got to sit down and learn it before you can enforce it, so.
That's my point, if you don't want to enforce it, then don't send your guys to the bot. If it's not biennial training, then you don't have to send them.
I thought that's where you was going, so. And as far as in town, White Sands, I mean, we, we try not to step on others' toes, you know, but we just see a lot of it, that it's not being enforced within the city limits. White Sands Boulevard is a perfect example.
White Sands Boulevard is still Highway fifty-four seventy, isn't it?
What's that?
White Sands Boulevard is still Highway fifty-four seventy.
What would be the difference between White Sands Boulevard and Sudarth and Rialdozo? Because I mean, there are buggies all over that road. How did they get that?
They've gone through the process with the state to get it approved, which is where, that's the, the right route.
So, that's, that's what I'm saying, what, what's the difference? Why couldn't we get that done here? Would we have to get the city commission in on it or what?
It sounds like the city could, they just didn't do due diligence with their approach. If they could get law enforcement on board and submit those letters of support, then there's a chance of approval.
I think it'd attack it again, learning what they learned that they need to state and have a better chance at it, but I don't know that anybody wants it as bad as the people in this room. And we're not in those positions right now.
But the people, you look at Red River and Towson, all that area, they're everywhere.
Well, it's, it's, it's a money.
Yeah.
It's money, it brings big money in there. It brings money to state because you bring them to tourism, dollars.
So, what steps, well, you two are both law enforcement, so what steps do you, you're presenting to us or recommending to us to, to get this done? Get this approved first?
I will forward you all of the documentation that I submitted to the city that I obtained from Rialdozo's approach to it.
I think we have a copy of that, but I'll, please do submit that and that letter, I would like to see that letter.
Sure.
But just in case we don't have all of it, we do have some of what Rialdozo did.
Yeah, I've, I've got everything that was submitted to them. And then I recently did a public works request through the City of Alamo, Orlando, want to have all of the communication that they had in digital format on it.
Okay.
I think on this, on the definitions of the vehicles and stuff, like I say, when this, I think when this was written, the buggies you see today didn't exist for, for just being, you know, manufactured and stuff. So, this is going to cover, you know, like, like the one my son has, you know, it's a smaller, or a.
But yours, yours on the, on the weight deal, them guys aren't going to carry scales around with you to run up on them scales, but if your taxes is seventeen, wouldn't it be, that's going to be sufficient?
I think your registration's going to give you some kind of.
It's going to save the weight, yeah, that's right, it's like a car.
There's, there's ways to do that. I just think that the definition we need to work on, it, it needs to be, I think it needs to be tweaked just a little bit so that, I, I don't want to prove this and then have half of these guys right here get a dang ticket up there, you know, because, well, we're, we're too heavy, we're, we're too long, you know, something like that. I think most of the buggies that, that you're going to see up there, they're going to be these, these type of buggies that these guys ride and stuff, right? You know, there're going to be some smaller ones that the hunters use and stuff like that. And just reading this, as, as far as on.
So, as far.
I think Jack's point though is, the definition of an OHV is, let's just say, eighty inches wide. Well, I've had it, I have, I put DOT tires on my truck, now it's wider than eighty inches. So, is now my, I'm not an OHV now, I'm a vehicle and I don't have to abide by this at all?
It's an argument to make.
Exactly, that's my argument, is if, if I no longer am under seventeen, if I'm over seventeen fifty, then I've made the definition of an OHV, so I don't have to worry about this at all. I'm just a car. So, if you rewrite this to include everything under that, the wider vehicles, the heavier vehicles, then you're putting them back in OHV status, which makes it harder to operate on a highway.
But the state's going to have to rewrite.
Bottom line is, we have to, we have to include this definition to make the request to the state to.
Exactly.
To get these highways approved, so.
Well, if this is state law, then why do we have to even approve it to begin with?
Because it's in their, it's in the state statute also that the local municipality or county has to have an ordinance reiterating their provisions to be able to get approved to have state highways for use.
Initially, the state approved it statewide, but it was not legal unless the city or the county enacted their own ordinance allowing it. So, like, so like, so like Doniana allowed it, the City of Los Cruces did not when it first started. So, you could write in Doniana County, and even though Los Cruces is in Doniana, you couldn't write it in the city. They've since changed that, but that's how that worked. So, there are, there are, there are counties and there are municipalities where this could still not be in effect.
I guess the question is, it says travel for four or more non-highway tires. If I put legal DOT tires on my thing, again, can I treat it like a?
That's the good argument. That's what, that's what I'm going to find out on Monday in magistrate court.
Okay.
I'm backing you a hundred percent.
Well, I'll be wearing the same tires here next month.
You go to court here? Okay, well, Dave, the, the only way I see we move forward is you have to have one of these approved.
Oh, yeah.
So, again, I think, I mean, this is just my own idea or feelings, but if we don't approve this, then we can't take the next step to go to the state to adopt the other highways.
But I think this needs to be tweaked before we can approve it.
I thought this was already in effect.
This, no, this is the one that they're looking at.
Which one is in effect right now?
This is the state law, this is just reiterating.
But the county, the county approved this.
We have, no, it's not approved yet.
We haven't approved this yet.
We have a, a very minimal ordinance, it didn't include all the provisions that were required. And in order to go to the next step, we have to amend this ordinance to include all of those requirements.
So, it was the city that did it first and then the county didn't?
No, the county had an ordinance, it just wasn't thorough enough.
Okay.
It doesn't hit all the wickets that they, they have in here for requirements for approval. Now, we got by before, because I think we got some section approved, but just to make sure and make sure they don't have a reason to deny us, I suggested that we update the ordinance to have every single piece that's required.
I, I, I got a text on this last minute and I did, wasn't sure what the context of the whole meeting was about, a hundred percent. Is this verbatim state statute, with the exception of where it says Otero County?
For the most part, it is.
Because I thought, I, I read, like this gentleman said, that there was a provision in here for crossing state highways.
And I just came across that, um, yeah, it's, and we don't have it in here, but it, it says off-highway motor vehicles may cross streets or highways except limited access highways or freeways if the crossings are made after coming to a complete stop prior to entering the roadway. Off-highway motor vehicles shall yield the right way to oncoming traffic and shall begin crossing only when executed safely and then crossed in the most direct manner.
And that's its own individual statute, so it doesn't need to be in here, right?
Yeah, that's state, state.
That's affecting the fact way before OHV became an issue.
Yes.
Because when I was a kid, we would be able to cross on our dirt bikes based on that statute, so it doesn't have to be in the document.
It, it does not.
So, David, what are you recommending that the changes are? Because we, we can't deviate that much from the state deal or they, they won't accept it.
I was trying to look up one other thing here.
Something else that concerns me is the age. You know, we have, my daughter started racing at five years old.
This isn't in the highways though, so they haven't turned a license.
Well, county, so county roads is what we're talking about. And we practiced in the mountains, the red sands, all the county roads.
But state law is always read, if you're under eighteen years old, you have to have the helmet, the goggles.
And a permit. So, if you're ten, then you have to take a safety class to get your safety driving certification or whatever.
What, if you read, don't quote me on this, but if you read the Forest Service regs, you're supposed to have that off-road safety course before you go onto any of the forest roads. If you're, Bryce knows this, if you're doing hunting, guiding, you're supposed to have all your safety courses. So, that is, that is part of it and has been part of it for years and years. So.
Under six restrictions, A, a person must be at least sixteen years of age operating OHV. My daughter was slow driving, who, how would they have to be given her license now? So, that's the age that I feel she would go, because the state statute says sixteen and twelve.
So, the speedway, whether it's called now, it's still progress.
But if, if you take another deal, for example, you, if you're fourteen years old, you can, like on a state park for a watercraft, you can take a course and otherwise you're supposed to be sixteen or something like that. You can take a course if you're, at fourteen is the magic age for the watercraft on the state park, which I bet if you look, there's going to be something in there that's going to tell you that. If you take a course, you can take it online, pass it, then you can operate that vehicle at that age.
And this does make a provision. And this does make a provision for that, that you can get an education card if you're under eighteen years of age or younger?
Yeah.
Also, I think, should that be written in here?
That is in here, I just read it, yeah. That is Section Four License Permits Insurance under Number Two.
Yeah. If eighteen years of age or younger.
Yeah.
Age sixteen.
Bryce.
So, for those of us who meet the requirements of the current state statute, my request would be press forward with just a step one. And we feel the state statute rules and changes on different platforms.
That, Bryce, is how I'm looking at this too, because if you deviate from this, you can't take the next step to the state for their requirements. Lucas.
Reading on, sorry, reading on the Red River ordinance, they have changed it within the last year what they originally saw, I guess, put in.
The state statute? The state statute?
Because I guess it's...
Well, Red River ordinance is going to be different than, I'm sure, than down here, but state statute is what we're going by right here to try to get the state roads adopted for the, the buggies.
Do they have different, a different...
So, they're holding the roads up.
They change their law?
So, you adopt this. That's what they're doing.
That's what we're trying to do. If we don't adopt this now, we're not going to have this requirement to go to the next step on this, trying to get on to the state roads.
Well, one of the things is instantly, now I'm required to wear a pair of eye protectors.
If you don't have a windshield.
But it doesn't say that.
That the same as, well...
It doesn't say that.
That's, that's some of the things that I have questions on too.
Yeah.
Because under the, under the motorcycle statute, it says windscreen or eye protection. And it doesn't give you alternative deals. And the hard part on this is, it was ridiculous, fifteen, five A fifteen, the eight to eight within six hundred feet of the house. That's three, three minutes, says two, two hundred yards, which is six hundred feet. Like he says, you're going to go through all those, you can't, you can't go through all those without getting...
I, I understand that. That's going to have to be something that you're going to have to go to the legislature to get changed or get them to start trying to change this process to something. It's not something that we can change.
I, reading now, there's a, I think this, the version I, I took from Eddy County was before twenty seventeen, I think it was like twenty sixteen, that's when we adopted our ordinance. But there was a twenty seventeen amendment that removed that provision. So, I would suggest that we strike that out if we, when we pass this. That would be five A fifteen, the eight to eight.
Yeah. Do you have a, the Michael Sixty statute book in this room?
I've got it here.
So, I guess the people that have a state highway license plate are grandfathered in, the people that get new buggies and they just have payment only, they're not grandfathered in. Since they changed that rule, but we have permanent plates on them.
I, Jack, I, you know how the rules are. You'd have to go to the DMV and ask that.
And I tell you, Jack, as far as enforcement and stuff like that, we don't even look at the plate anymore.
The game and fish does.
If they get the sticker, that's what they should be, they should be looking at the registration sticker, not the plate. And they won't even give you a sticker for a plate anymore. They put the sticker on the fender.
So, we don't have to register them no more?
No, you still have to register them, you got to get your sticker, not, not a plate, not a sticker for a plate. You got to get the sticker that goes on the side of the vehicle.
But you have, you have to get two stickers, ones on highway and ones off highway. I had to get a license plate last year for my, my buggie. And it doesn't have, it's not a highway license plate, it's a payment license. Permanent.
And they told me I had to show both.
Well, you got two different stickers. You got the green one and you got the yellow and white one that's supposed to be displayed.
Right, and then I got the plate. And they, they told me at the DM, State DMV, I had to display all of it.
Well, they only gave you one plate though.
Yes.
Yeah.
But the sticker too.
I got two stickers and license plate.
Yeah, that's what you're supposed to have.
Yes. And I still can't drive no more.
I think the thing is very confusing. It's very confusing. And that, what do you call it, it's not aware that they've gotten bigger, they're heavier, they're faster, and then they want to stick to an old antiquated statute or law. Where are they? Don't they look out the window and can see things got bigger? They've never been to a dealership and see that the speed is faster, it's a bigger vehicle? You know? So, I put the onus on them that they're not, make up a stat, you know, make up a law that they're not even aware that the vehicles have changed.
So, the way I'm feeling right now, I'm going to, I'm leaning forward to approve this to move on to the state highways. If we don't approve this, this whole thing's dead in the water.
Like you said though, let's strike that.
Fifteen.
Let's by you.
Fifteen.
Yeah.
Section five, Operation A fifteen.
Is that the one that you just read a minute ago?
Yeah.
And we can, we can do that?
Yes.
Eight AM to eight AM.
So, we can, we can make that change?
We can.
Did we need to add anything about that windshield because of the eye protection? Is that in there anywhere? If you have a windshield, you don't have to wear the eye goggles?
I'm looking.
If that's the, that's where I was, my argument was off the motorcycle deal and then this is probably totally different, but...
Yeah. Just trying to get this smart device here to smarten me.
So, Bryce, have any, you and Matt, have you approached the Forest Service on trying to open a road to two forty-four?
Um, there's been some offline discussion about it. But without this happening first, then there was really not a whole lot of points pushing that issue. So, this has to happen first and get that section two forty-four. And then, you know, there's, there's some old forest trails that we've been approaching with possibly...
It's okay, they banned us from the trails. But I see them driving their trucks on it all the time.
They're government officials, they can do that. They'll tell you that too.
Put a G on mine like this.
I, I don't see anything in the statute currently about windshield or windscreen.
Okay.
So, it's a requirement to have eye protection or eye, what do they mean by eye protection?
If you're driving a, a four-wheeler without a windshield, I'm, you're going to, but the new ones, I don't know, I'm, I'm still taking it as the motorcycle laws. Also, it also says if you're under the age of eighteen, they'll all have, I think that's regardless of whether you got a windshield or not, but... So, so right now, I'm going to make a motion for approval of this with the subject change on the one item. Are there any other items?
Paragraph five A fifteen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? Chef Black, you have any?
I was trying to find one other thing. I got to the, the OHV, the, on the game and fish. I was looking for one other thing, but I, I don't see it right now. I thought I knew right where it was, but I don't see it.
Okay. Well, if you're looking on game and fish, Matt just sent me a deal that says game and fish has rules on windshields.
That's what I was, I was looking for. I've read it in here, I just don't find it. It's going to be in this...
I don't know who that, that would ask for.
Okay, the vehicle has one or more headlights, one or more taillights, the vehicle has brakes, mirrors, and mufflers, the operator has a valid driver's license or permits as required on the Motor Vehicle Code and off-highway motor vehicle safety permits as required under the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act. The operator is insured and compliant, the operator of the vehicle is wearing eye protection that complies with the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act. And if the operator is under eighteen years of age, the operator is wearing a safety helmet that complies with the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act. Now, I would have to read the Off-Highway Motor Vehicle Act to actually read you the definitions that's in there.
Sorry, David.
It's all right.
As I read these state statutes on this that are referenced in here, sixty-six dash three dash ten eleven through sixty-six dash three dash ten sixteen, this is not revaded with state statute.
You'd have to address that with him.
This is the twenty twenty-one state statute. Under Section sixty-six dash three dash ten twelve, driving off, driving off-highway motor vehicles adjacent to highway, so the questions that were put up earlier about driving on the right side of the highway or the left side of the highway are addressed under this statute. Off-highway motor vehicles issued a validating sticker or non-resident permit may be driven adjacent to a highway yielding to all vehicles entering or exiting the highway in a manner so as not to interfere with traffic upon the highway only for the purpose of gaining access to or returning from areas designated for the operation of off-highway motor vehicles by the shortest possible route and when no other route is available or in the area adjacent to a highway is being used as a staging area. Such use must occur between the highway and fencing that separates the highway from private or public hands. That's subsection A. Subsection B is when snow conditions permit, an off-highway motor vehicle may be operated on the right-hand side of a highway parallel, but not closer than ten feet to the inside of the road, I'll bank.
This doesn't have everything in, in there, like the, the section about crossing the highway, it doesn't have that in it. So, we can, we can add that, but I, it's, it's part of...
Because people are going to, they're going to grab this. They're thinking that they want to be in compliance with the law.
Well, ultimately... I don't know about, David, I never worked for the sheriff's office, I worked for the city. We cite, we cite it under municipal ordinance or under state statute. I never cited it under, under a cabin ordinance. So, although these are rules, whenever you write the citation, you cite it under state statute, not under this ordinance.
Okay.
So, how does that, how does, how does it affect what's in here versus state statute?
Ninety-nine percent of what we cite, it's going to be state statute.
Right.
That, that's what we're going to follow.
So, I guess, does that mean regardless of what's in state statute, this doesn't have to match it?
I, I think a, a point I'd like to make is that state statute stands as it does and you can cite on it. The only reason we're doing this is to open up those highways to the OHVs. We're only putting in there the minimum what we have to, to take that next step.
Okay.
So, we don't have to put it all in, but they have certain criteria that must be included.
I just want to check one thing under the safety requirements right quick.
I was looking for...
Somebody else had a question, they had their hand up, didn't they? Did anybody else have a question out there? You, you got your question answered?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
David, Matt's saying, hang on. Under protective...
So, I was looking for...
Under protective down more. Under protective, I don't know what that means, down more.
Amy, in reference to your question, under state statute, a person under the age of eighteen but at least ten years of age shall not operate a motor vehicle unless that person is visually supervised at all times by a parent. Legal guardian, a person over the age of eighteen is a valid license. Thirteen years of age has a valid motorcycle license and off-highway motor vehicle safety permit for fifteen years of age and has a valid driver's license and structural permit of the provision of license and off-highway motor vehicle safety permit. So, there's other provisions for me to override the positions that John Bill was like, the race driver.
Could you repeat? Harvey, what's going to be changed?
Uh, the, the provision that you didn't like, we want to make sure you get home, so we're going to remove that part.
Thank you very much. Kathy, appreciate it.
It says under protective, but I just, I don't find that protective section here.
You have a question back there?
I have a question. So, I'm kind of reading on Arizona, it seems like the DMV kind of changes their kind of ruling on you to actually classify as a on-highway vehicle. Is that something we need to look at if going to like a DMV and say, why can't we get this transferred to an on-highway vehicle? You know this? Because it just seems like that's what Arizona did. If you just get, you go to DMV and you make sure you got blinkers, windshield, turn signals, and they just give you an on-highway plate.
Our plates already say that though.
Your what?
Our plates already say on-highway. Once parked out front, the plate and sticker say on-highway.
Montana did that.
So, what Lucas is saying is in Arizona, you can ride it anywhere you want except the interstates. And I was telling you, I think the same thing's in South Dakota too.
They still ride on the interstate.
Yeah, the interstates.
Which has a state statute rule.
So, again, my suggestion is to get this passed, the, the rules you want to change by the state are going to have to come through the legislation and you're going to have to approach them, all your congress senators, and hit them that way. But if, if y'all are still wanting these roads to try to the next step, we're going to have to have this piece of paper approved first to go to the step two. If, if, if y'all are not wanting these roads opened up, then we can drop this right here and leave it the way it is.
I don't think it's, I just want to make sure it's right.
Yeah.
Just, just checking all the T's and on the I's.
Right.
Is there anybody here that done with this filter? There you go.
Yeah, I think you already made a motion, didn't you? Yeah, I think you already made a motion, didn't you?
I did.
And we're removing fifteen out of that, the eight eight, eight P M. To eight A M.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
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 Motion passes. Yay! All right. Does anybody have anything else? All right. Well, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and we can go eat supper. Thank you, everybody.
When does this become effective?
Yeah.